Okay, we're gonna do some skipping around this morning. We're gonna, first of all, we're gonna go to item number nine. And that's Adoption Resolution Number Twenty-Five-Dice-Thirteen Honoring Colt Allen Woods. Sometime back Jackie Ellis came to me with a story about a young man and his achievements. And he's not a one in a million, he's a one in millions that here from Hardin County. So I'm extremely proud to have him here today and to honor, pay tribute to his deal. And it'll restore your faith in what people can do. Kevin? Judge, if you and Redwood stand close.
First off, I want to thank Jackie for giving me the opportunity to read this. But also just to tell Colt it's an honor for you to be a friend and call you a friend. Y'all ready?
We're ready.
It's Resolution Twenty-Five-Thirteen. Be it remembered that the future success of Hardin County rests with the youth of today. And whereas Hardin County resident Colt Allen Woods is an exceptional young man who has earned the admiration of many in the community for his success in competitive shooting. And whereas all those circumstances have somewhat limited his activities, when the door of opportunity closed for Colt, a window opened, one with a panoramic view of a sport that would help him make his mark and sound his trumpet loud and clear. And whereas Colt's achievements are chronicled in many competitions across the region. These are just the pinnacles, we couldn't write them all because this resolution would weigh eight pounds. From two thousand and nine through two thousand and thirteen, he was the high overall average in all these separate counties. Madison, Henderson, Calhoun, Comal, Fayette, Montgomery, Houston, Jefferson Counties. In two thousand and nine, he was the first place in crossfire sporting clay shoot. He was also Top Gun in Clayford Kids. In two thousand and ten, he was the shotgun shootout champion at the state games. Also, he was Top Gun in Comal County. In two thousand and eleven, again, he was shotgun shootout champion at the state games. In two thousand and twelve, he was the runner-up at the state games. And in two thousand and thirteen, again, he was the shotgun shootout champion at the state games. Whereas Colt Allen Woods is known for much more than his skillfulness on the shooting range, his perseverance, personality, and humility place him in a unique group of young leaders and champions. And whereas, his parents and stepfather are to be commended for providing opportunities for their son to be the best he can be. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Colt Allen Woods has left his tracks in Hardin County's history, and the Commissioners Court is pleased to honor him today. Sign this the twenty-third day of December, two thousand and thirteen.
Okay, I'm gonna ask Judge Thomas to make the presentation.
Okay. We need to get you, where does this stand? It's right there. All right, I guess we do it this way. You know, we gotta look towards her. All right.
Okay.
I got a couple things if you don't mind.
All right.
I'd just like to say, it's a huge honor for Hardin County to acknowledge all my achievements throughout the years and what everything I could come from to come into this. It means a lot for y'all to do that. And I'd like to say a special thanks to, you know, my friends and family. There's no way I could've been here without that. And many public officials put their time and stuff behind me to help me get to where I am today, and it means a lot. And, uh...
Loaded out my wits when I get back.
I couldn't have done it without them. You know, two major influences, uh, was my dad from, uh, been beside me the whole time and put me into the whole gun atmosphere and take me since I was a kid. And then I couldn't have done it without John, my coach. I mean, he drug me all across the state to do it, and it meant a lot. It really does, it's something I remember forever. And that's about it, I appreciate it.
We need to get the four of you together for a picture.
You just wanna pick on the short people.
Yeah. Okay, we got somebody wants to say something about it.
Ask his grandmother. I never would have been any prouder than myself and his grandfather.
Right.
Thank you.
Judge Thomas, you wish to say?
I don't know if I can say anything after that. I just wanna say, I'm proud to know you, this really is a remarkable achievement. And I can remember my days in four H, going out and shooting, trying to shoot twenty-five clays and I'd hit nine. And I thought I was ready for the state championship, but it is a remarkable achievement. And, um, I don't think I can say anything else, I might get teared up. I know Red Cooper's always got something to say. Give him, give him, give Red Cooper the vibe, yeah.
Jackie, you did a great job doing this. You had to work behind the scenes, not let Debbie know what happened.
A little while, yeah.
And I'd like to say to Judge Caraway, the Commissioner, I think it's a great thing that y'all do to honor these young people. You've done it in the past, and I know you'll do it again, but well, if I mix up and call him Trigger, me and Britt Clunks the only one that ever called him Trigger from day one, I don't, I don't know why, but maybe because his daddy was a pistol and he's a son of a gun. But we've called him Trigger, but Colt, I'm proud of him. He, uh, he's had some setbacks, and Jackie, I'm not gonna take long. Because I borrowed this, I borrowed this coat from Walmart and I gotta get that. But, uh, but Colt's had some setbacks, and, but he hadn't let that hold him down. He's went on and accomplished a lot of great things that Kevin read, and, uh, and that's just some of them. And I know he, he was one of the four that represented the state of Texas in the national shootout, and they won, of course, won it, Texas was number one. And he's to be commended, and, and I tell you what, he's, he got some things that may would hold him back, and he could just sit down and say, I'm not, but not, show you the kind of young man he is. He just kept pushing forward and forward. And, uh, let me say this, one other thing, then I'm gonna sit down and get out of the way. When he was born, he was very, his mother was protective of him, of him. She thought that she was the only little lady that ever had a baby. She didn't want nobody around him, didn't want nobody holding him. And so she wanted my wife, Pat, to babysit him, and I said, now Debbie, Pat'll take care of that boy, but now, it's people in and out my house, and they gonna be around him, so I'll tell you upfront. Do you, you know, she said, finally she consented, said, okay, I want Pat to keep him, so he did, and, and he kinda liked it over. He got where he'd cry when he'd go home. But, uh, but let me say this, then I'm gonna sit down, she was so protective, her mother called me one day and said, Red, would you ask Debbie to let me hold that boy? Do you, the Commissioners wish to say anything?
Just congratulations, it's a great story.
Congratulations to her honor. Yes, sir. Bobby.
Congratulations.
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
All right.
Congratulations to me.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
Judge, I'm moving approval of Resolution Twenty-Five-Dice-Thirteen.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's go to item number four, Approval of Minutes for Prior Meetings, that being the regular meeting on December the 1st. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, Sharon Overstreet, Treasure, Presentation, Approval of Cash State.
Our cash balances as of today, December twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen, general checking account, we have one million, nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. Our tax pool investment account, we have three million, six hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-four cents. The total money's of five million, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty cents. Our tax pool rate is zero point zero four one one percent.
I move we approve cash statement. Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, Sharon Overstreet, Presentation, Approval of Restured Claims to be Challenged by Court. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, Sharon Overstreet, Presentation, Approval of Restored Claims to be Challenged by Court. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, Lawrence Protherm, Auditor of Payment to County Bills.
We have some pre-approved expenditures on December the tenth of two thousand and thirteen for ten thousand, six forty-nine thirty-five. We have pre-approved expenditures on December the seventeenth of three thousand, five sixty-eight fifty-two. We have pre-approved expenditures on, from twelve, nine to December twenty-third of fifty thousand, six seventy-nine ninety. Today's bills were a hundred and twenty thousand, three seventy-one ninety-seven with an overall of one eighty-five, two sixty-nine seventy-four. We had a payroll from last court to this, uh, gross payroll was three eighty-seven, seven eleven point seventy-six. The payroll taxes were twenty-eight thousand, three thirty-one thirty-six. Retirement was fifty-two thousand, four thirty-one twenty-four, with a total transfer payroll of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four seventy-four thirty-six.
I move we pay county bills. Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, Commissioner Pelt, Discussion, Approval of Prior Year Surplus Carryover for Road and Bridge Funds for All Precincts.
Uh, Court, this is something that we do each year, uh, because sometimes Commissioners do not finish their road and bridge work, and, uh, we wait until later in the year to do it. Sometimes we carry over funds so that we can do a major project. For instance, I have one down on Keith Road, it's gonna take about four hundred thousand dollars, and I try to save up funds to do it, because I can't do it out of one budget. And also, uh, years ago, this carryover allowed us to meet our bills in Hardin County without having to borrow money, which we haven't had to do that in a long time. But Larry may wanna make some comments about it, but we are carrying over, um, these funds.
We have completed our outside audit field work, and the auditors are now just waiting on our final draft report to submit to them, which I'm going to be doing this morning, as reason why I'm not sitting up there. Uh, the, in the final report, we have in our budgeted revenue, a four million, two seventy-two, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars, but, uh, and our final budget revenue was four million, three oh seven, six oh one. The difference there was we called, we had less money last year to do the carryover, so we transferred from the general fund or provided, and transferred to the, from the general fund to Road and Bridge. As it turns out, our actual revenue was four million, three hundred and fifty-nine, four sixty-seven, leaving a fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollar excess revenue, therefore our transfer is not necessary. Our expenditures on the general Road and Bridge, we only have a seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollar, uh, ex, uh, revenue, or, excuse me, uh, variance, which is a positive variance, so a total of fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and seven dollars of additional revenue that we are not, we're not anticipating. Higher our expenditures by precincts, we've, as Kim Pelt has already mentioned about the carryovers, our original budget was four million, fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars, and our final budget was, uh, adopted budget, was four million, nine hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven seventy-five. But our actual expenditure for each of the precincts was four million, one hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and two dollars. Therefore, each of the precincts combined have a eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars of unsaid funds. The breakout on that is Commissioner Precinct One is four hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Precinct Two, seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. Precinct Three, two hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety. Precinct Four is a hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars. Now, the actual certified available funds that I'm certifying today is nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, oh, uh, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand and eighty dollars. The fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and six dollars is available for the Commissioners to either decide to, uh, return to the general fund, or actually, uh, appropriate as a contingency or as a reserve for the Road and Bridge to use for the current year. Uh, that is your decisions to make, and that is my final comment.
It would be my motion that we transfer the actual amounts that Larry has listed here, and that we take the fifty-nine thousand, six oh six and put it in the contingency fund.
Second. Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
I'd just like to make one more comment, Judge. Looks like a lot of money, but like, in my situation, that two, two hundred and forty-six thousand, basically, we spent that in October on a paving road, so money's not there. You know, we are using it.
Okay, item number ten, David Sheffield, District Attorney, Discussion Action to Adjust Budget to Increase Salary of Assistant District Attorney, and to Make Position Without, uh, Outside Legal Practice. David?
Yes, sir. We have two attorney positions in our office. One, the Attorney Precinct Number Two is coming open, and we're going to be filling it. The purpose of this is to bring that position salary in line with the first attorney's position. The first attorney position making ninety-five thousand, uh, dollars, and Attorney Number Two, the one that we are filling, is currently making seventy-nine, nine ninety. However, what we'd like to do is amend the budget, add, uh, what is roughly thirteen thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars, and bring that salary in line with Attorney Position Number One, but at the same time, uh, require that that position also, uh, that person who fills that cannot have an outside practice. And so we'll have both attorneys, Assistant District Attorney, uh, totally dedicated to, um, prosecution of criminal offenses and not, uh, practicing any outside employment as an attorney. That kinda, that salary, and those requirements will allow us to better professionalize and prosecute cases that we're having to address, and also attract the necessary talent that's necessary to fill those positions.
I think that was offered in the, uh, budget workshop, wasn't it, Mr. Sheffield?
Yes.
Uh, and I don't have a problem with this, but I do have a question. What if we, uh, did a budget amendment on this, and then you couldn't get someone to agree to that? Uh, you go, you go back to your old salary and...
I believe I have someone that, that is a very good candidate, that, uh, is very interested in coming and working under, under those terms.
As Commissioner Cooper has mentioned, we had extensive conversations about this during our budget hearings. I think it's in best interest of the county that we have full-time people in this position, because when you have part-time people, there is a conflict between their outside practice and the practice of the county, and, you know, part-time works well at Walmart and McDonald's, maybe because you punch clocks and you know what time you've got, but on county, there's always questions how much they're timing. And I applaud David for doing this, and, and, uh, I'm certainly for it.
So we're looking at ninety-three, five thirty-eight, roughly?
Uh, actually, it's gonna be ninety-five, uh, sixty-one. However, we are already one quarter into this budget year, uh, so the amount, we need to act the legislature, it comes to about thirteen thousand, five forty, uh, to bring that salary in line with the Attorney Number One position.
Does that include all the fringes?
Yes, yes.
And so you're asking for an addition to your budget of thirteen thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and one cent to finish out this year?
Yes, sir, yes.
I would move that we amend the budget to add that to David's budget and take it out of contingency fund.
Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number eleven, Commissioner Franklin, Discussion Action to Increase Salary of Precinct Four Secretary.
This lady has been working for the county for twenty-five, going on twenty-six years. She's never had a step raise, um, due to my oversight. I forgot to put this in the budget, and, uh, I need to get her a raise of about seventy-nine cents up to the salary of, uh, Precinct Two Secretary. I forget, I don't have the figures here, but it's seventy-nine cents. So I move that we, uh, change the budget to, uh, to, to show that.
Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
And by the way, I forgot to add, she's gonna retire next year, so, uh, this, this will help her on her retirement.
Okay, item number twelve, Shirley Stevens, Tax Assessor Collector, Discussion Action Regarding Refunds Which Exceed the Five Hundred Dollar Limit, Account Number Fifty-four, Thirty-Five Hundred.
Okay, Judge, this account was double assessed by the Appraisal District for two thousand and ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, I believe it was, maybe eleven, twelve, and thirteen. And, uh, the gentleman paid it, and then has been in conversation with the Appraisal District, they finally corrected it. The total refund for the county comes to five thousand, seven sixty-four fourteen. And the Appraisal District has corrected this error.
So move. Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number thirteen, Shirley Stevens, Approval of Payment to Business Inc. Company for postage for voter cards.
Uh, this agenda item should have gone to, um, Jackie prior to my issuing of voucher, and for whatever reason, it was overlooked, and this is for the voter registration cards that were just mailed out. We just need permission to make that payment.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number fourteen, Teresa Wigley with Emergency Management, Authorization for County Judge to Sign Annual Service Agreement with County Information Resources Agency, SRTA, for the county's emails and website. So move. Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number fifteen, Rose Stewart Personnel, Discussion and Adoption of New and Revised Job Description for Sheriff's Office.
Uh, and that's exactly what it is. There are two chapter descriptions, one was revised, uh, from Administrative Assistant to Office Manager, and the other one was, uh, new chapter description for Evidence Crock.
Move it up.
Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Rose, while you're standing?
Yeah.
Do you have something?
Yes, sir. It's always a pleasure to honor a long-term employee, and we have one of the ladies here with us, Lisa Fien. She has been in the tax office for the past fifteen years.
All right.
And, uh, Shirley?
Well, I have to say that this is a real honor to present this to Lisa. She was the first employee that I hired.
All right.
And, uh, she has been an asset to me. She's been a wonderful employee, and her daughter has been an extra special blessing to us, and it's my pleasure to give Lisa this.
Okay, now Lisa, you have to give a speech, you can't just walk out of here.
I wanna thank Shirley, she's put up with me for fifteen years, and the board days now, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, item number sixteen, Discussion Action to Appoint, Reappoint Commissioners to the Emergency Service District.
Uh, on Emergency Service District Number Five, Sarah Lake, instead of Tom Swab, that should be Rusty Tress.
Do we have any other changes?
That's all I know of.
Which one was that?
Tom Swab, on the Emergency Service District Number Five, bottom one, Tom Swab, that should be Rusty Tress.
Mine look good.
Yes, sir. On the, uh, number six there, I think one of them is up for reappointment, and I'm far reappointing him. He was not up on his, uh, training hours, but I contacted him, he's getting his training hours, so I think everything's good on that. I move we reappoint these Commissioners.
Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number seventeen, Linda Davis with Engine Health, Adoption Resolution Number Twenty-Six Dice Thirteen, Approving Application to Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission for All Funds Available under Community Services Block Grant for the Provision of Emergency Services and Case Management for Elder Engine Person.
I move, I believe so.
First of all, Linda's not here today because her mother passed yesterday, and, uh, we all wanna give our condolences to her and that. I, my understanding is the services are scheduled for Thursday at maybe two o'clock at the Catholic Church in, in Sarah Lake. Okay, all right.
Do you know what funeral home has her body?
Uh, Brussels.
Brussels.
They've got hearing cards. Uh, I did talk to her about, uh, this, and then those, those funds have been reduced down to just a little bit over thirty thousand, and this is for, uh, certain people that they can help out with, uh, utilities and some stuff like that. So, my motion is that we, uh, approve this, Adoption Resolution Number Twenty-Six Dice Thirteen. Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number eighteen, Commissioner Pelt, Discussion Action to Set Public Hearing on Right-Away Abandonment on Thirty-Foot Eastman on William Wise Subdivision, Henry Stevenson League, Abstract Number Forty-Nine, Hardin County.
Uh, Court, this is a subdivision that was, uh, platted with the county in nineteen oh three during the oil boom at Sarah Lake, it was never developed. Uh, subsequent years, the land has been sold, half of the land fronts on county road, the other half that doesn't, is owned by, uh, people that have access to the county road, and, uh, it's just, it's something that has to be done in order for them to divide it, divide the road easement, and each side of the subdivision will get fifteen feet. And I'd like to, for the Court, set a public hearing for the, uh, first meeting in January.
Second.
It'd be the thirteenth, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what, nine forty-five or something?
Nine forty-five.
I have letters from all the parties, you know, agreeing to it.
Okay. All right, nine forty-five. So we have a motion in second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number nineteen, Jackie Ellis, Purchasing, Discussion, Approval to Donate Surplus Office Desk, Tables, Bookcases, and Chairs to West Hardin School District under Local Government Code Two Six Three Point One Five Two. So move. Third. All in favor, say aye.
They don't hear me.
All opposed? Motion carries.
We know you tried to sell them. We know you did.
We got Jackie and Esther here, and I wanna compliment them on securing a bunch of additional furniture from the state, uh, that's really a big boost to, uh, the courthouse and to Commissioners too, as, as far as extremely nice.
And then we'll be helping the school out with our stuff that they get, they're, they're excited. They said they had chairs on a table desk for teachers, they had no doors in on, and so they were really excited about the donation. Yeah, yeah. The great lady was my church, I had mine. So it's great.
Okay, did I, did we approve it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, item number twenty, Jackie Ellis. All right, item number twenty, Jackie Ellis, permission to sell surplus office furniture, office equipment, and surveillance equipment, health equipment, furniture, and miscellaneous items.
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number twenty-one, I knew Esther had to get in this on paper. With flood plain, discussion action to enter one-year warranty period for Oak Ridge Park subdivision.
About the middle of last week, I, I got a call from, uh, Don King on Fifth and Shipman. He was going out to check, um, the top of Trail and the Oak Ridge Park subdivision for the drainage. And, um, I've given you each a copy of the letter that he, um, sent to me. So I entered it in the commissioner court records. And now we are requesting, uh, at his recommendation, that we enter the one-year period, uh, on the top of Trail Road.
Is this the one that, um, we tabled last time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, has the culvert been put in?
No.
Okay, well, I think the last time we met, we weren't gonna consider entering the one-year agreement till the culvert's been put in.
Yes, sir, that's the decision for the court.
Okay.
Um, Bobby's probably got some comments, but I went out and looked at it. There are some areas that's holding water. Uh, those don't appear to me to be major. As I understand, they removed these earthen embankments and feel that'll take care of the problem. At one time, there was this center culvert that, uh, was discussed at the last thing meeting. And Bobby said had been, uh, concreted up. I witnessed that. I also asked Esther if that center culvert was on the plans that the court approved, and it was not. Uh, I think you said it might have been.
It was discussed, and it was on some of the ones that we had not approved. It was not approved.
But it was not on what the court approved. And, uh, as such, I think that, you know, the court would have a difficult time changing the specs after, after it's over. It, it should have been on there, in my opinion. But, uh, and I think this is something that we need to discuss with Don. And, uh, because it was installed, I guess it was some thought that it might be needed. And certainly, uh, in riding that road and look at it, it would certainly be advantageous to have that culvert there at the center spot because there is a natural drain that looks like takes off to the west. But due to the fact that it's not in there, then I think we're obligated to go ahead and take it on the one-year warranty period. Uh, would like to minutes reflect that we do have concerns. And if during that one point, during that one-year warranty period, if we have evidence of that water stacking up on one side as it was in the picture. Now hopefully, removing these earthen embankments will have taken care of that problem. But if during that one-year warranty, if we would, if the situation developed like it did before, then it would be my recommendation that the warranty period be stopped until further corrections were taken.
I, I respect that, Mr. Pelt. And I think probably that's the legal thing for us to do, but I will be voting against it. Uh, I've seen too many in already that we've entered the one-year warranty period where I'm paying for it right now after ten years. That somebody should have took care of it ten years ago. So until he puts that culvert in, I won't vote for it.
Well, I think in the future, what we've got to do, we've got to get with our engineer. And we've got to look a lot closer at the plans on these drainage. And, uh, so we don't get caught in this situation.
I'm gonna vote against it.
But I ain't got a second yet, so it may not be the voters.
This is the same letter submitted this time that was submitted on, uh, on, uh, November twenty-fifth. And it still outlines the same things. What, it's the three things that concern me. Uh, it is our opinion that the Creekwood Storm Drainage Ditch should be cleared of overgrowth and debris as it appeared to be constricted. Also, the two culverts on Keith Road directly to the east of the newly constructed concrete road were observed resisting the flow of water and should be cleaned out. That's the only thing that's been done. The, uh, uh, storm drainage that's being referred to, which I've mentioned this to Mr. King, water out there runs from west to east. This what he's talking about is west of the new road. If in effect it needs to be cleaned out, that would have put more water on the new road. But that has not been corrected. And if you go out there and drive down Creekwood, you'll see three sets of culverts. You got one set is two twenty-fours. You got the next set is two twenty-fours. You got the third set is three twenty-fours. And there's only two sets of culverts on this new road. Nothing in the center. There used to be a culvert, but I observed them pouring concrete, damming it up, which don't make sense. And if you read, if you read the definition of warranty, a guarantee given to a purchaser stating that a product is reliable and free from known defects. So that, but, uh, there's no way to warranty that.
I agree with everything you say, Bobby. I just think that, uh, the fact that this was approved on base, on the recommendation of our engineer, we approved the subdivision without that center culvert in it. That if now, after removing those earthen embankments, and it's my understanding that, and we only had, we had something like a three-inch rain. But it's my understanding that Don King witnessed it maybe, and he says that it took care of the problem. If it took care of the problem, then I don't feel we have the grounds to deny starting a one-year warranty period. But I do believe that if it did not take care of the problem during this one-year period, and we see that it did not, then we should stop the warranty period until corrections are made. But right now, I do not know that we have ample evidence to say that it did not correct the problem. Because if it had these two earthen embankments that supposedly trapped this water in there, and they're removed, then maybe the problem is.
I have a copy of both letters.
Okay.
One, November the, uh, uh, November twenty-fifth, we've met since then, and this letter was on that agenda.
Yes.
The letter on this agenda is the same identical letter. Still outlines the same thing, does not correct anything.
Well, and if I remember right, we had about a six to eight inch rain that we discovered the problem.
Correct, we had photos of it.
And, uh, a three-inch rain's not a six-inch rain.
Wait, wait a minute, Bobby. Uh, now my understanding was, and the developers here, right?
Yes, he is.
Okay, the day we showed, we saw those photos, the explanation was that there was two earthen embankments that was preventing the water from getting to the culverts at each end of the road. Is reading that water stacked up, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, now it is my understanding that prior to the next rain, that these earthen embankments have been removed. And I didn't see them when I was out there. That they have been removed and that it took the water from the three-inch rain. And like Chris said, a three-inch rain's not a six-inch rain.
That's, that's also correct. And I actually tried to get ahold of Bobby to see if he would go out there with me.
I returned your call, left you a voicemail, best you've, I've never heard from you.
But.
You, you might have, but I didn't get it.
I know I did, it's on my phone.
I apologize for that.
The, the earthen embankments are removed. We know that. We know we had a three-inch rain that it took. We don't know what a six-inch rain or nine-inch rain or whatever. And that's the reason I structured my motion that if we see evidence in this year that this center culvert is needed, even though it was not on the plat, it was not on what the court approved, that we would stop the warranty period until further repairs or alterations were made. Uh, to me, that is a viable way out of this situation. And I do think we need to have conversation with our engineer in the future, that these things are more critical. Uh, there is some type of natural drain right there halfway through that, down that road, going to the west, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's.
And it, that, that to me was a common sense place to put a culvert. And evidently, I didn't see them, but Bobby says culverts were put in there, and then they were concreted up, which to me does not make a whole lot of sense.
There was a original, there was an original culvert in there that was too low to do any good.
And that's reading you.
The road was poured over because both engineers, mine and the county's, determined that there was no need for that culvert at its high point.
Okay.
And so that's why we, it, two reasons, you know, it was too low and it wasn't needed.
And the plat submitted to this court for approval did not include that center culvert. And to me, that is the key point right there. If it had included that center culvert, we wouldn't be having these discussions. Because we wouldn't do anything until you put it in. But the fact that it was not in, and our engineer approved the plans, and based on his recommendation, this court approved, approved the plans, then I think you do have some type of legality here since they're maintaining that the reason we saw the picture we saw was because there was two earthen dams that had been installed. And now that they've been taken out, so the water can get to the culverts at each end, then I think you do, I do not think we have the evidence to say that the drainage has not been corrected. I wish we did, but I don't.
I don't know what other kind of evidence you have.
Well, I'm under the impression.
You got, you got, uh, we got the copy of, two copies of the same letter. Nothing has been done except concreted the ends of some culverts out there on Keith Road. That's the only thing that I can see has been done.
But what, what are you?
My whole concern, my whole concern on this is to keep the county out of a lawsuit. That's my whole concern. And, and, and my second concern is, why haven't we not received a letter from Mr. Cross's engineering firm to con, to convey all this? Why haven't we got that?
I, I guess, right at this time, Bobby, what are you saying they need to do?
Whatever the engineering firm says, well, well, needs to be done and will stand behind it, I'll go along with it. But my way of thinking, there needs to be some more culverts under that road. Now that's what I think. But if he's got an engineering firm that'll stamp it and take us out of the liability, then I'll go along with it.
Well, our engineered firm stamped it.
Yeah, but his doesn't.
And, and, and my, my decision was weighted on the citizen's comment. And the citizen asked that there be a culvert put in, and so.
Well, but I, I don't think, Chris, I don't think a citizen asking for a culvert be put in a subdivision will override the fact that this subdivision was engineered and our engineer put his stamp of approval on it. And this court accepted his stamp of approval and agreed to the plat.
Agreed with that.
Now, this picture concerned me greatly that we saw. But the reason that we saw the picture, according to our engineer and according to the developer, is because there was two earthen dams that were in place that prevented this water from getting to the double sets of culverts that are at each end of that road. I went out and looked at them. Now, to me, common sense would have said you, you had a set of culverts at the center where this little natural drain is. But they weren't put on the plat, they weren't proposed, and this court did not accept them. And since we had our meeting last time, the berms have been removed. We did have a significant rain, a quick rain. And our engineer says that the problem was solved. But I still believe that protection of, for protection of this, the taxpayers of Harden County, and we do have a year.
What do you do?
That we should go ahead and accept the road, accept the warranty, start the warranty period, but with a provision that if during this year, we see evidence that what they removed these berms did not correct this problem, that we stop the warranty period until the problem is corrected. And that would be putting these culverts in the center to me, which would be common sense.
May I remind the court too, that the one-year warranty period, and I know we've had it in Mr. Cooper's area, is not necessarily just a one-year warranty period. If the, if the drainage doesn't work and, uh, the roads are undermining, uh, from water, we stay in that warranty period until the problem's corrected. The county never assumes those roads or accepts those roads.
We don't have to final acceptance.
So if you're in that one-year warranty period and you get another big rain, and this court decides that those culverts do need to be in there.
Then we can stop.
What's the difference between the legality of, if he don't wanna do it? Then to now, what's, what's the difference in the legalities there?
Well, the difference, the difference in legality is, at this time, he is maintaining, and our engineer is maintaining, that taking those berms out at each end, which I can see they were trapping the water. The water could not get to four culverts, two sets of twos. Right now, we don't have the evidence to say that we have a problem. We had a picture that gave us concern. But the reason we had the picture, according to them, is that these berms were blocking the water from getting there. They have been taken out. But on, on this, uh, possibility that this might not have solved the problem for a six-inch rain or a ten-inch rain, then I'm saying that we make it known at this time that we're starting the warranty period, that we do not have enough evidence that it won't work to deny it. But we're saying that if in this year period, we get evidence that it is not working, that the warranty period is stopped, and that they have to make the correction. It's, you know, it's just very simple.
Of all these meetings we've had, and they know what needs to be done, they haven't done it. So therefore, it ain't gonna be done in warranty period. Besides, I read you the definition of warranty. You, you can't warranty anything that ain't there.
Well, my question would be, if we, if we don't have a six to eight inch rain in that one year, can you extend it? In other words, if it doesn't.
We have extended it before. We've extended it in Westwood Village, too. In fact, two is still in the warranty period, uh, and that's why we haven't gone into phase three yet because of that.
I, I, I would be more inclined to vote for it so long as we have an adequate opportunity to review it. In other words, uh, if it doesn't rain six to eight inches, then I'm not gonna be for accepting that road. I mean, if, if, if it's not put to the test, because the burden that you probably don't care about is how it's gonna get fixed and paid for once you're off the hook. And that's where this, uh, we have that decision because it does not go away. And then you have angry constituents, and then you have angry citizens because the county accepted a road they never should have accepted in the first place.
You know, Chris, I have a rather good reputation. And, you know, when, when you say that I probably wouldn't take care of it, I, I, you know, I resent that remark.
You haven't yet.
You haven't yet.
Bad remark.
You haven't yet.
Now, what I'm saying is, is we, we deal with constituents all the time who, who are upset about the county accepting roads that in their opinion should have never been accepted in the first place. And then we're, there's a lot of complaints out of Lumberton area about roads and drainage. And, uh, there's lots of people running for Bobby's seat, and those people get to hear it all the time. Now, why don't you go along with them while they're out campaigning, listen to the complaints? It'll validate my point. Because we have to protect the, uh, the monies that we're spending based on the construction that's done today. Because it may be eighteen months, twenty-four months before you get a six to eight inch rain.
Well, I guess the next question comes, you know, what, what, uh, when you say a six or eight inch rain, you're talking about a flood in an hour, right?
Well, that, well, that, that was exactly our point, that what we made on the last court.
Are we needing to, for the future reference, are we needing to design these things for a flood, a six to eight inch rain in an hour?
Well, my impression on the last time we met is that Bobby, somewhere in the construction of this road, asked y'all to put it in, and y'all just decided you wasn't going to. And so what I think happened is your plans, your plot that was approved is what you defaulted to. And when the road commissioner came out and asked you to put it in, you said no. You went with the technicality of no because the plat says no, even though the evidence said yes.
We, we've never been asked to put in a culvert, not even at this last meeting.
I think we all agree.
I believe it's in the minutes it was that, was what we asked.
I'd like to check those, you know, and I, I don't wanna get in an argument here.
Well, we're not gonna get in an argument. You resent, you resent being implicated, like you said. I resent you, uh, trying to run over this court like you've run over. Because the last three months, you've had a chance to correct that problem, and you chose not to.
You know, if the, if the engineers, uh, they're saying that it'll work.
Show me that. Show me that copy of the engineer that says it'll work.
You've got one?
No, 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 I said your engineer. I told you in court last time, I wanted to meet with your engineer.
Write a letter, you know.
I wanted to meet with you and your engineer. Now, I told you that in court.
Yes, you did, but I was, I was not able to get ahold of you.
Oh, yes, you, yes, you was, but I returned your call. I got proof on my phone that I called.
My question would be, how do we, if this passes, how would we monitor to make sure that, that, uh, he's, he's in compliance?
We might get somebody besides him because he, he don't, he don't play for.
Well, Judge, I, I think, you know, we get some pretty heavy rains. And I intend to go look at the road when we get a heavy rain and, uh, you know, Esther certainly knows when it's raining and, uh.
Usually when it's a heavy rain, I'm, I'm out on that morning.
If, what, taking these berms out, and I go back to the berms, if taking the berms out has solved the problem, I don't think that'll be that difficult to, to tell.
Be good. Here's two copies of the letter. They're both the same letter. Don King wrote the same letter that he did in, in November. There's no difference.
I think that's our problem. I think that's our problem. We need to discuss with Esther and Don King.
Okay, King would have some liability with this if he signed off on it.
That's right.
The county really doesn't have any liability in that first-year warranty period, or even if we extend that warranty period, um, you know, as, as as far as repairs or drainage, you know, it all goes back to Mr. King. He's the one that's approved this.
This is, this is the reason I reiterate that I feel that the best action in this court would be to go ahead and start this one-year warranty period with the conditions that I have outlined. And let's see if what they have done works.
And, and what I'd like to add is, I, I will, I will vote for it if there's documentation, if there are photographs taken, and if it is certified, and, and, and at the end of the year, if we've not had a sufficient rain, I am not voting to accept the road.
Yeah.
I have several hotspots in the county and Mr. Cooper has one in his area that when we have heavy rains or if I see a heavy rain in the lower part of the county, I, I leave early that morning and take pictures. I have pictures on my phone from all of them and I can.
We no trouble add this one to it.
I've been out there and taken pictures.
I still believe before this court, we ain't voted yet, but I still believe before this court can take an intelligent vote, we have got to have an engineer's report from his firm stating what they'll do and what they won't do and what's, what's right and what's wrong, which we have never got.
Is, is the, uh, is the burden on Don King, is my question.
It's the representative of the county. That's my understanding that he's the engineer for the county.
So if, if, if we entered into a lawsuit over this road, would Don King be liable for that or would Harden County be liable? Don King would be.
I would think, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, I would think that.
We're getting into a lot of legal areas here that, uh.
But I think Mr., wouldn't you think Mr. Frost, uh, engineer would be responsible to Mr. Frost and not to Harden County? Because Don King is our representative. Am I thinking of that wrong?
I guarantee you, lawyers, lawyers are gonna argue this a hundred different ways. But the fact that we approved the plat, the fact that, fact that our engineer looked at all of this, and basically what our discussions are revolving around is a center culvert that common sense to me says would have been good to be in, but it was not on the plat. Still, at this point, our engineer is not saying that one is needed. He is saying that taking these two berms out has solved the problem. And I think you've got to look at the evidence. But just based upon the fact that it may not have solved the problem, then I think it's right for this court, because we do have reservations, to say we're going to have some qualifiers in this one-year warranty period that if we have a flood, if something shows us that that culvert is needed, we're gonna insist it be put in. To me, it seems like a fairly simple way to handle a thing. You know, not get into legal difficulties over what we should have done because we have an avenue to go ahead and start the warranty period and yet if it doesn't turn out that things are correct, and we won't know until we get some water. But we'll know quickly if those berms did solve the problem. Now, there is some evidence and our engineer has said that there's evidence. I don't see it in this letter. But he has said that taking those berms out took care of the problem. I talked to him after court that day and he felt certain that taking these two berms out was gonna solve that problem.
Is that not in the letter?
I don't see it in the letter.
Well, I would be inclined to vote against it until Don King produces a document saying that it's taken care of and transfers the liability to him.
Or to some engineering firm. Not, not our, not our, uh, man, but Mr. Frost's engineer. And the man that drew up all that has got to have a say so in, in, in what happens there.
Yeah, I don't think it's too much.
We have yet to see anything from Nature's Engineering or whoever that is, is, is a engineer. We've yet to see it.
Well, I, I, I would, I would like.
Well, you have the plans, you know, from Nature's Engineer.
I'd like for us to get a letter from Mr. King stating what Ken had said.
Okay, well, since we're hearing, uh, can we agree that if King produces a letter saying that he believes taking those berms out has solved the problem, then is it all right to go ahead and start the warranty period?
Is that gonna put the county at risk though?
Well, the county is always at risk, Bobby. I mean, we, we're at risk on every, we're, we're not at any legal risk. You're talking about legal liability for those people who live back on the west side?
Nobody any kind of legal risk because King is hired by the county.
I don't think that.
And if he gives us, I, I just don't understand why we can't get something from his engineer. I don't understand that.
Well, I think we have a plan from his engineer.
Got the design.
He, his engineer submitted a plat, a plan, that based upon our engineer, we approved, this court approved it. And it did not have a center culvert in it. And I think if you get in a legal challenge such as that you're holding these people up unduly, then I think it would be critical that we approve that plan.
Well, uh.
Now, we do have concerns based upon a photo we saw. But we were told that day in court that the reason that water was trapped was because of two earthen dams, one at each end that was blocking the water from getting these double sets of culverts. But they went out and removed those and our engineer said they removed them and that we then had a three-inch rain and they saw no problem. So I think as a legal matter, you've got to keep this thing in the proper context.
Can you, can you restate your motion?
Yes, I move that we start the one-year warranty period based upon getting a letter from Don King that says that removing the earthen dams has solved the water backup problem that we saw in that photo. And that if anytime during the one-year warranty period, we see evidence that the problem is not corrected, that we stop the warranty period until corrected.
I would second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now, that we've done that, that will anybody have a problem if once that it is completely dried up and we can put a dozer in those ditches? That we give it more of a percentage of fall, which will solve a lot of the problems also?
That's Bobby's pretty safe.
I don't have a problem with anything that will, will help the flow of water out of a ditch. I don't have a problem with anything.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Well, we can, you know, where it's, where it's a half percent now, we can turn it into, you know, one, one percent, one and a half percent, you know, and, and, and do a tremendous amount of flow.
Now, okay, sounds good.
Got a motion of adjournment?
I'm making a motion of adjournment.
Please stand adjourned.
Merry Christmas everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Who made that motion of adjournment?